All right, so once again, six forty-five, and I will call this meeting of the Lunenburg School Committee to order, and I will turn it to Dr. Burnham.
Good evening, everyone. As a preliminary matter, this is Dr. Burnham Superintendent of Schools. I'll do a roll call to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Chair, Mrs. Carol Oshambo?
Yes.
Vice Chair, Mr. Brian Leighton.
Yes.
Secretary, Mrs. Laura Kelly? Will not be with us this evening, correct, Mrs. Oshambo?
Yes, that is correct.
Mr. Anthony Schoenbrini?
President.
And Mr. Peter Beardmore?
Here.
And I do not see our student representative on the meeting just yet. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Recording Secretary, Ms. Susan Summers?
Yes.
Business Manager, Mr. Michael Cassidy?
Yes.
And Director of Facilities, Mr. Pusiteri? And I'll turn it back to you, Mrs. Oshambo.
Alrighty, thank you. Good evening. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and will be broadcast over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel and streaming on Facebook Live at a later time. And this meeting of the Lunenburg School Committee is being conducted remotely. In accordance with the governor's orders suspending certain provision of the open meeting law, public meetings may be conducted remotely. The order, which you can find posted on the town website on the COVID-19 Information Center page, accessed through the town manager's webpage, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Lunenburg School Committee is convening by telephone conference, video conference, via Zoom app, Facebook Live, etc., as posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. For Zoom meetings, please note this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and that you take care not to screen share your computer. Anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda when they conclude their remarks. Any of the members may provide any comment, question, or motion. Please hold until your name is called. And remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. Speak clearly, excuse me, and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through the chair taking care to identify yourself. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. So now that we have all of that housekeeping taken care of, the first thing on the agenda is public comment. If there is anyone online here with a public comment, please raise your hand. Mrs. Plant, I see your hand up. If you would like to speak, you're welcome to do so.
Good evening, thank you, I appreciate that. My name is Lisa Plant, and I live at 490 Lancaster Avenue. My son has been attending the Lunenburg School system since kindergarten and is now in third grade at Turkey Hill. He's a very bright boy, and we, my husband, care deeply about him and his future, as most parents do. We recently received the iReady test results for Turkey Hill as of November 8th of 2022 and compared them against the iReady test results for the primary school as of March 3rd, 2022. In March, the reading results were fifty-six percent of all students tested at or above grade level and forty-four percent tested at one to three or more grade levels below. In math, forty-three percent of all students tested at or above grade level and fifty-eight percent tested at one to three or more grade levels below. As of November of this year, in reading, forty-five percent of all students tested at or above grade level and fifty-five percent tested at one to three or more grade levels below. In math, twenty percent of all students tested at or above grade level and seventy-nine percent tested at one to three or more grade levels below. I realize this isn't news for the superintendent of schools, but we find these results disturbing. With fifty-five percent of the student population at an increase of eleven percent from March 3rd in students testing at one to three or more grade levels below in reading and nearly eighty percent of the population with a twenty-one percent increase over March of 2022 testing at one to three or more grade levels below in math, what is the plan and where is the sense of urgency to reverse this trend? Last year, we asked the school committee about the poor performance and their plan forward. The superintendent responded that she did not see the results improving until her architecture was implemented and she needed another year to do so. Well, what is the superintendent's architecture? Is it implementing an SCL program and requiring all students to participate? Is it conducting an equity audit? Is it ensuring all students are equal when they graduate from the school system by focusing resources on students who are one to two, one to three or more grade levels below where they should be and bringing their scores up while those students who are at or above grade level languish? Speaking of the equity audit, so far, no one from the administration nor the school committee has defined what equity means to the school system. And at one of the prior school committee meetings, a member asked the chairperson, "What happens after we get the audit results?" And she said, "We'll implement it, period, end of discussion." So here are some questions for all to think about. Will the school committee make the equity audit results public and hold informational meetings to secure buy-in from all stakeholders, specifically parents? Will this be a one-and-done audit or will this become a permanent line item on the annual school budget? How does one know if the school achieves equity? Is there a certificate of achievement? Will the teachers have to attend equity workshops to get their minds right? How much has been spent thus far and what does the future spend look like? In closing, our house is on fire. The iReady test results have proven that, and the school administration and school committee are measuring for window treatments. It's time to step up, take action, and do what's right to ensure the success of our children. They deserve it, and they are, after all, our future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Plant, for your comments. I will take a minute to address one thing. That when you were discussing the difference between the March scores and the November scores, please note that the March scores for second graders were based on second grade grade level achievement. The November scores are based on third grade achievement. That score, those scores tests were done during September. It is not surprising to me that the beginning of the year, third graders have not made their way to end-of-year third-grade achievement. I don't know if, I don't, I haven't seen the parent form, and I don't know if it explains that. It is a question I asked right away. When Mr. Schoenbrini is nodding that it does, but it's a question I asked right away when we implemented the iReady program. Is, were those benchmarks, end-of-the-year benchmarks, or were they reset per trimester? They are end-of-the-year benchmarks. We would not expect very many of our third graders to be at end-of-the-year third-grade grade level at the beginning of the third grade.
No, to be clear, these are the entire school population. It's not based on, on grade. It's third through fifth.
Well, yes.
And then, and then K through two.
They're based on grade within, within that span. For example, what they, what they would do is they would look at the third graders and see where they are as compared to the third-grade benchmark. They would look at the fourth graders and see where they are as compared to the fourth-grade benchmark. That, that's the way that kind of thing is done. However, I'm going to tell you that we are not happy with the, with the results in general and that the goal the superintendent has made for herself and for the, the school population in general is to move these so that eighty percent of our kids are at grade level in two years' time. That is a very, very high goal. And the entire school district is working on that, so.
Yeah, and again, that's focusing on the kids who are behind one to two, one or three or more grade levels behind. And then the kids who are higher achievers are going to decline and then become average because they have not received the attention they deserve.
To be honest, I, having, having taught this grade level for a really long time, having spent time with the curriculum leaders in Lunenburg, they are, they are differentiating. The teachers are learning to differentiate their instruction so that kids are being met where they should be met. What I would suggest you do is that you would contact your child's teacher and meet with them and bring this very concern up because it's an important concern and it's something that needs to be addressed. But I would suggest that you meet with your child's teacher and have this discussion. I'm going to ask Dr. Burnham if she has anything she would like to add to that, and then.
But to be clear, this is a district-wide problem. It's not, it's not just our son. Our son is, according to the test results, where he's supposed to be, but that's not the point. And his teacher has been fabulous and has been sending extra work home so that he is challenged. We are concerned about the district as a whole, not just our own child.
I understand your concern. Dr. Burnham, is there anything you'd like to say?
I think that I've explained to the committee the multi-pronged plan to support growth for all students, not just those who are currently performing two or more grade levels below, but for all students and strengthening tier-one instruction in the classroom for all students across the district.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Schoenbrini?
Carol, I just wanted to give some information based on Ms. Plant's questions. I had the same questions when we got the iReady test scores, and I also had the same concerns, frankly, when we moved here because of how the US News &amp; World reports ranked Turkey Hill. And so like, basically, every question she has asked tonight is a question that I have asked at one point or another in one of these meetings. And so, I don't know if I have, I certainly don't have the answers, but I can tell her what information I got when I was looking for the answers. So, Ms. Plant, I, you always bring really good questions to us, and I'm very grateful. So the thing that, when I was looking at the test scores, I had the same issue that comparing the end of the year to the beginning of the year was a problem. And then, when I, when I met with Dr. Burnham and the curriculum team, it looked, I looked at the data in terms of matching year to year as opposed to the end of the year and the start of the year. So this end of the first year or the end of one year to the end of the other year, and it gave a better correlation in data. So if you're looking at, like, trying to track growth or trying to find weaknesses, the, the data was better and more informative with less noise if you did end-of-year to end-of-year. So, end-of-grade one to end-of-grade two. And all the education people, Brian, Carol, Dr. Burnham, please tell me if I misunderstood anything. But tracking end-of-year to end-of-year is better, correct?
I agree. But the, the results are still poor either way.
No, no one is, no one is arguing that.
Yeah, I, I don't think that's, the other thing is, I, I was really concerned, Ms. Plant, like you are, about the results. And so, I took a, a day off of work to come in and meet with the curriculum team. And one of the things that I don't think, I mean, as a parent, like, my wife is not on the school committee, and she didn't take her day off work either. But the one thing that I was struck by was the comprehensive nature of the new curriculum and how the new curriculum sort of stitches together, you know, the traditional subjects through the lens of reading. You know, like, you're not doing like, like, when I was a kid, I did like seventy-two questions of long division without any context, which was just like a page of numbers. And now, and again, please correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Burnham, there's more of a context given to it where, you know, they're the dreaded word problems. But, you know, like, in, in real life, we're all doing word problems. No one ever comes to you and is like, "Divide one-hundred-ninety-two by seven-thousand-six-hundred-fifty-five." So I think that the, the curriculum, the new integrated curriculum is something that I, I think that the school committee is hopeful will make a difference. And it's a concrete thing. Like, sometimes I feel like we talk a lot about goals and we probably need to do a better job of explaining how we get from where we are to where we want to be. And in my mind, the, the comprehensive curriculum change is, is that thing. And, you know, I don't know if it's gonna work, but as you said, we needed to do something, and that seems like a good way to start. So, and again, it, I, I'm not an expert, and I'm just really telling you from the perspective of a parent. And then the last thing that I would add is, when they did the iReady meetings, like, they did school-wide meetings. It was Annika Scott and Tim Santry, and for my older son, they explained the, the tracking issue and how to look at the data. And they also answered the questions about the tiers for like the kids at grade level, the kids below grade level, the kids one to three below, like, grade level. And they gave much more detail about how they're doing data tracking on those kids and how they are tailoring things specifically for them. I can tell you, my son is in eighth grade, or seventh grade, and he really hates the fact that he has specific questions for him in iExcel and iReady, so that, like, he will get, you know, a certain number of them right with a very few number of wrong, and then the next day, he will have harder questions. I don't know if that applies to where your son is, but that was the thing that I was struck by when going through, looking at the data and going and attending the iReady explanation sessions. So I, I don't know if that helps. I don't know if that explains anything better. But from my perspective as a parent, those were things that I took solace in and said, like, well, that, that, you know, we need to do better, and that seems like one way to do better with, you know.
Those were all explained to us by Chad Adams as well. But again, it still doesn't negate the fact that the school system has gone downhill. Like you, Mr. Schoenbrini, we moved here to Lunenburg because of the high scores of the school system, and they've dramatically just decreased over the past six years, even prior to COVID hitting. So I just hope that people.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Plant. We well went over at three minutes, and I need to do a better job of keeping the three minutes to where it should be. Mr. Beardmore?
I'm surprised, thank you.
Evening. First of all, I appreciate the conversation that just occurred. I, I would ask that we, for public comment, try to keep it less conversational and more comment-oriented. But I, I do understand that there's a, a need to interact sometime just for, for clarity. I personally share a lot of the concerns that, that Mrs. Plant has articulated earlier. I understand the complexities, and I, I understand the strategy, but that does not mitigate, in my mind and a lot of other people's minds, the urgency. And, and I just want to, to acknowledge that and let you know that my ears are open and when good ideas and better ideas surface, I'm certainly open to listening to them and, and, and helping to articulate them and, and, and see if they are implementable when the time comes. And I will go back and listen to this recording specifically and put some deeper thought into this conversation and maybe have a, a better organized comment or, or series of questions for the administration for our, our next meeting. I, I did want to make a, a general comment just to publicly acknowledge the select board meeting that occurred on November 8th. And I'll, I'll keep this very brief. But basically, the net-net of it is, is that I think that the conversation that occurred at our last meeting two weeks ago relative to the town municipal building committee efforts was seriously mischaracterized during that meeting by the select board liaison to the school committee. And I would urge anybody who saw the select board meeting but did not see the school committee meeting that it was referred to to go back and watch the school committee discussion. We're about to have an extension of that discussion on the agenda tonight. But I am very optimistic that we can come up with a workable plan that, that meets everybody's needs. And I, I, I take a certain level of offense to way, to the way that how my thoughts and the thoughts of the rest of this committee were portrayed at another elected board in town. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else with a public comment? All right, then I'm gonna move on to the chair's report. We have received communication from Representative Kishmerik regarding possible help with sidewalks. He's offered to speak to us about options. However, once the first middle, middlesex race is decided, then I will contact all three legislators and see what they find are options. He did suggest the grant funding that isn't gonna work for us, but there was also something else. So, once the other race is decided, we can move forward with that. And I have sent a letter to the select board stating our interest in developing a complementary environmental policy to theirs once Mr. Pusiteri's questions have been answered. And I also wanted to thank those citizens that took the time to attend last evening's town meeting. That would be my rather brief chair's report tonight. So next on our agenda, I believe we are skipping over the, the minutes this evening, is that correct? Because I didn't see them. Okay. And then we do have a line item transfer. So, Mr. Cassidy?
Mike, you're muted. Sorry, you missed my great intro.
We did.
This is, okay. Yeah, this will, this one will be better. My Cassidy business manager, and in front of the school committee tonight is a, a budget transfer. I'll do the best job I can identifying amounts that are being transferred from which accounts. But this evening, we're, we're looking to increase budgets for the superintendent's dues in meetings, line item by two-thousand-five-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars. Fire safety slash furniture repair account by ten-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars. And IT general supplies by twenty-eight-hundred dollars. I'd like to, to offer a reason why we're, we're making these transfers, which, so let's start with the, the superintendent dues and meetings. There, there has been an increase in, in a number of dues that, that the superintendent and the administrative staff participates in. And we are also joined Massachusetts Partners for Youth is a new membership this year, which was not budgeted a year ago. The next line item is fire safety forward slash furniture and repair. So this is, all I can say is that we're, we're trying to adjust budgets, and you'll see this in, in the FY twenty-four budget, trying to adjust services and purchases that really reflect the name of the title of the line item. So we, we did put in, in, in this account, we put in the services for protective services, so they're the monitoring of the fire alarm system. And we also did an upgrade on that service as well to, to make it more clear to their response. So we're shifting money from another account to cover that. We're not asking for additional money. It was budgeted in one place, we're shifting it in a more appropriate place. And then finally, IT general supply budget, twenty-eight-hundred dollars. That is a, a line item or a budget that supports the, the maintenance of our printers in the district. And that service went up twenty-eight-hundred dollars since last year. So I'd be happy to take any questions from the committee on this, on these transfers. And these will be negative balances on the upcoming quarterly report. So I'm trying to reconcile those negative balances for that report. So I'll, I'll turn it back to the chair.
Thank you, Mr. Cassidy. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Cassidy regarding the line item transfers? I can't see you, so sing out if you do.
This is Peter. Mr. Cassidy, computer supplies versus IT general supplies? I understand that IT general supplies are related to, like, network printers and that sort of thing. What are computer supplies by comparison?
Computer supplies are just ongoing small replacements for, maybe, maybe it's network cables, just stuff that you can just buy off the shelf without calling in a, a vendor. So it's, it's, it's just those quick little purchases that, that just kind of keep the offices in the network running.
Okay, and MTC for building maintenance, is that maintenance supplies?
Building, that's our building, that's our building supplier count, yeah.
MTC stands for maintenance, or is it?
Yes. Okay. Yeah, that, that, once again, that's a, that's a munis code.
Yeah, no, I understand, and I just, I'm not familiar with all these lines, so bear with me. And then the health insurance, I, and I, I know that this relates to the budget report later on. Where we're below trend on health insurance spending, I assume?
We're probably on target. But it's a two-million-dollar budget, so I think we can afford the twenty-five-hundred-dollar transfer to cover that. Yeah, the, I'm seeing not that, not that many new enrollments and from some of our new employees. So I think, I, I think that, I don't think that, we're probably on target for that, for that account. I think I mentioned last school committee meeting, a number of our Esser employees didn't enroll in the insurance, and that's why there's a surplus in those Esser accounts. So the enrollment is, has not necessarily increased.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any other questions for Mr. Cassidy? Alright, thank you very much. Are there any other questions for Mr. Cassidy? Hearing none, then do we have a motion to um approve this line item transfer?
So moved.
Second motion.
Alright, and then a roll call vote, please.
Mr. School and Brainy?
Hi.
Mr. Beardmore?
Hi.
Mrs. Kelly would be an absent. Um, Mr. Leighton?
Yeah.
And Mrs. Arshambo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh next, we have the superintendent's report.
Good evening. It's a pretty brief report compared to some of recent days. Um I want to give you an update on the Family School Partnership Initiative. We have been accepted to participate in Desi's Family School Partnership Initiative program. Our team will attend the cross-district kickoff meeting tomorrow. Our team is represented um. By our special services director, the director of teaching and learning, our English language learner coordinator. Um we have an elementary general education teacher, a secondary levels um special education teacher. An adjustment counselor, secondary assistant principal, elementary assistant principal. Community school programs director and a PTO member um all on our team. While the uh the folks who are running this program are thrilled to have a superintendent as the team lead. Uh they did rather insist that I have a co-lead because they know the nature of uh. The superintendent's uh role in the district. Um so I'm happy to say that Meredith Weiss. Our EL coordinator has agreed to fill this very important role. I want to express my gratitude to uh Mrs. Weiss and all of the members of the team. The program coordinators have expressed that they are very pleased with the quality and the representation on our team. Quick update on the equity audit. The equity process consultants have conducted one-to-one interviews. Uh surveys were administered last week for staff, students, and families. And they will be conducting a focus group discussion with the Equity Advisory Council next Monday. Some important uh November reminders. Actually, today is National Educational Support Professionals Day, so thank you to all of our para-professionals in the district. Much appreciated at the work that they do for our students every single day. Uh this Friday is National Substitute Educators Day, and we also very much appreciate our substitute. Uh teachers as well. Reminder for families that the twenty-third, Wednesday, the twenty-third, is an early dismissal beginning the Thanksgiving recess. On the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, schools and offices are closed for the Thanksgiving recess. And some early December reminders, uh December first is the annual tree lighting. On the Lower Common at the gazebo at six PM. And December seventh will be our next school committee meeting, and that will be at Town Hall. It's a hybrid meeting with a six-thirty PM start. And I just want to um take a moment to wish all of our families um a very happy Thanksgiving. And that's all I have for you this evening.
Alright, thank you very much, Dr. Burnham.
Mrs. Arshambo, a quick question or comment? Um so um. First of all, I am uh. I know that I I think it's since our last meeting that this was announced, but uh I want to just congratulate the superintendent and the administration on. Being selected for the Family School Partnership Initiative. I think that um. You know, this was m- more or less a response to my pushing around communication and engagement that. We we augmented some of the the goals for the coming two years um and and pursuit of. Participating in this uh in this program was was one of the action items, and I think that this is a. Fabulous first step uh in uh in pursuing. Improvement when it comes to uh to family and community engagement, so I'm I'm super excited about that. Uh and I I I think it's a credit to you and your team that we were we were selected, because I know that it was a uh. A competitive program, I guess, that's how you would put it. Um the question is, can you? Maybe just set some expectations or begin to, you know, communicate with us in terms of. What your expectations are in terms of when we'll start to see. Either updates and what what's going on in the program or some potential ideas or action items that that might come out of this. Is there maybe just an agenda that we can see initially or or what?
Um we're working to establish dates for different meetings, so there are a couple of um. Meetings across uh the November to June timeframe that are cross-district. So every district that's been accepted into the program attends those meetings, and then there are um. Meetings that our team will meet with facilitators. Um and then there uh the expectation is that our team will meet without. The facilitators to do some of the work that comes from from the um the other meetings. Again, we're working to select those dates. Our team, I'm trying to assess the availability um of the members of the the team. And then I'm gonna forward um. Dates that our team uh is suggesting uh for meeting dates with the facilitation team. Once they can confirm that, I'll have a calendar mapped out, and you'll have a series of dates when we'll be having meetings. Um and then I anticipate um as a general uh practice that. At the at the school committee meeting, following any of our facilitated or cross-district. Um team meetings that I can give you an update on uh what was covered and what we're gonna be working on. And then, you know, as we get into um. Some deeper work with the district, I can also potentially be putting some things on as agenda items, just to. Give a a presentation and allow for questions.
I appreciate that, and I I know you're in very nascent stages here, but uh I appreciate that additional color. Thank you.
Alright. Thank you very much. And next, um student representative, I do not see one right now. So if someone should pop in, we'll insert them where we can. Um now we have new business, the discussion of the five-year staffing plan.
So this um item is on the agenda um at the request of Mr. Beardmore. Um so I'll let him initiate the conversation.
Okay, sure, so um. The five-year staffing plan, as I think you all know, um is a, I believe it's traditionally a December item. Um.
Yes.
The you folks review. Um and as I I've illustrated in in previous meetings. Um. While I understand the the usefulness uh as a tool for the school department or the school committee. Uh in terms of hu- helping to guide planning over the next five years and and having. Uh this needs analysis done um as a. I- i- is a is a wider aperture, if you will, for us to to look at at what we need to start planning for. Um over the past few years. That staffing plan has been taken. Maybe arguably out of context. And applied to the five-year fiscal forecast. That the town manager reports to the select board and the finance committee. And the effect that that has had just from a. Illustrative, I I'm trying to find the right word, and I I know it's not the right word, but the way it's depicted. Um is that you have all of the departments that are trending based on a financial projection, plus or minus. Two and a half percent for all of the other, for all of the other departments. And you have a financial projection that looks like a giant hockey stick for the school department that reflects. A five-year staffing plan that is not necessarily grounded in a. Budget guideline uh in 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 budget guardrails. So my question is, is how do we? How do we accomplish what we want to accomplish, what we need to accomplish from a five-year staffing forecast? But also put that into the context of. Some budgeting guardrails. Um and you know, ideas that came to mind for me are potentially to look at this in the same way that. We've done year-to-year budgeting, right, which is. You're all familiar with in the past, the superintendent has done, okay, this is the needs version, this is scenario two, and this is scenario three. Based on different funding levels. I understand when you multiply that out over five years. The variables get quite crazy, um but I'm. I wanted to bring this up because. It's November. This is a process that's gonna start next month. The next month after that is the fiscal forecast. And I I'd I'd like for us to be able to have a conversation in terms of making sure that our expect- our expectations are aligned and. The other members of the committee don't agree with me and they don't see this as a problem, then that's fine, but. I'm I'm trying to articulate a a concern that I have in terms of. How. The school system is perceived and how we're budgeted relative to the other departments in town. I hope that made sense.
Um I I have mulled this over quite a bit as. Mr. Beardmore knows, he sent me an email, and I probably took a month to get back to him, because I. We are not the same as the other departments. It doesn't work the same way, but I have seen. People blowing steam out of their ears, thinking that we think we're gonna hire, you know, seventeen more people next year. And um I I understand the PR piece that Mr. Beardmore is referring to. Um but I. I struggle with how to to make it smoother. Um because at this point in the year. Positions that may show up on the five-year forecast even for next year, we don't know which of those positions we're really gonna need. So to me, if we were gonna do something. Based on two and a half percent, based on. No additional grant funding, because a lot of these positions end up being grant-funded. You know, maybe we could put a line at the bottom that says, based on that. We see that with the two and a half percent funding, maybe we would be able to fund two of these positions, but not name them. I I don't know if that defeats the whole purpose, so. Uh that's why I struggled with this, because I do see the PR issue, but it's not the same thing. As one firefighter a year. I- it's a different, it's a different ballgame, I think. Um, Mr. School and Brainy? We can't hear you.
You you have a lot of experience doing budget stuff, Peter, and so I want I wanted to hear what your thoughts are, because I think you're I think you're on to something. Um. My professional experience ended up doing a lot of work with kids and a lot of work. In the sort of place where kids and and the criminal justice system meet, and. The data that we've been getting, both in the state where I work, which is New Hampshire, and nationally. Has been that the impacts of COVID are so different and so extreme. Compared to anything we've ever seen, that we're probably like. You know, if we're on a roller coaster, we're still on the the chain lift up the hill in terms of impacts for kids. And so. What what do people that do what you do or think like you think in terms of budgets, how do you account for sort of a. Un uh unprecedented impact, like I remember the insurance industry after nine eleven was like, this was a mega catastrophe, we couldn't take another one. And I think that it's it's not uh unfair to say this was a mega catastrophe for education. How do you budget that?
I think that's a that's a that's a really good question, I think um. So the budgeting that I've done in my in my professional life. Has not had the major catastrophe uh attached to it, right? Um. You know, with the exception of. Major recessions, right, where your your revenues are declining and you're trying to figure out how to, you know. Keep the ship sailing uh and and you're having to realign expectations. And I think that that's probably part of the discussion that we need to have. Not necessarily specific to the staffing plan, but definitely specific to the five-year forecast, right? Which is, you know, look, if we if we increase by two and a half percent a year. And you look at the massive variability that we have in health insurance. You look at the fact that. We are in a in high inflationary period right now. That is going to have a pretty substantial effect on collective bargaining. Uh most likely in the coming years, and I hesitate to throw around numbers, but. Chances are, we're gonna be in a difficult position um when it comes to paying for our 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 people. Um. And then you look at drops or or the end of funding for programs like Esser. Um. In the absence of another program that picks up Esser. Or, God forbid, you say the O-word, an override, a general override that that backfills that revenue. We are going to be operating with fewer people. In three years than we are today. I I mean, the math just does not support any other conclusion, right? So. I I think that it's our job. To be able to illustrate that. Right, and say. You know, yes, there's a needs analysis that might show that we need a. Ten percent or fifteen percent annual increase over the next five years to be able to meet our needs. I'm throwing them. I have no idea what those numbers are. Could be thirty percent. I I don't know. Um. But in the reality of a two and a half percent increase. This is what it looks like. These are the services that. We can't deliver. These are the programs we might not be able to support. And I don't even know if we can suggest back to the back to the issue that was raised during during public comment, and I think. You know, in this context, it's a very real issue, right? What effect is this going to have on achievement? Um and I don't I don't know that we can look to, you know. Research or or other data to be able to make those projections, but I I think that that's the. That's the other, that's the other swing of the pendulum. Right, it's it's, yes, there is a deliver a needs-based budget over five years. That with local funding, we are not going to be able to afford. Or deliver services based on the money that we are likely to be able to achieve. Uh or we have visibility of at that two and a half percent annual increase. And this is what we are not going to be able to deliver. And I I think that we have to find a way of beginning to illustrate that, and it's going now. These are emotional topics, right? Like this is this is a really big problem. Um and hopefully, it's something that our legislators can help us with and those kinds of things, but when you're doing a five-year forecast. In my view, the answer is not to stick your head in the sand or pretend that something is what it isn't. I- it's to illustrate reality, and and I I think we need to think about doing that.
Okay, Mr. Leighton?
Thank you. Um I think I I would agree with Carol and Peter that it is a PR. Move that we need to be more careful with what we put out there, because our words can get twisted. We saw it with the the select board meeting uh last week. Uh and not everybody's a public education supporter or a Lunenburg school supporter. Um and some people just wanna keep funding Lunenburg Public Schools at two and a half percent every year, no matter if it's COVID or. Um, and some people just wanna keep funding Lunenburg Public Schools at two and a half percent every year, no matter if it's COVID or it's a good year or a bad year. So I think we just got to be very careful with how we put out our our five-year plan, but I think it's still important to put out a five-year plan. Um, but I think we should do it a little differently. I I think we should have our list of wants of what what the school would really want to be a top-notch school in the state. Um, but also that we do have that idea of what a five-year plan is gonna look like, if it's a two and a half or two point seven five percent each year, what we would do year one, year two, year three, year four. But again, it is a forecast, we don't know what's gonna happen. Again, ESER funds. Um, when when Peter mentioned ESER funds, I'm like, yeah, that's a big deal too, that's gonna change a lot, but also grants change a lot too. Uh, we recently saw Massachusetts Question One pass, that that could make a huge difference too in educational funding, but again, it's just it's a plan, it plans can change, and I think that's the important thing is that we're putting a plan out there. We have an idea and the superintendent has an idea of how she would wanna have her staff set up over the next five years based off of at least a two and a half, two point seven five percent increase, and if we get more grants, we can look at that list of of wants and see what we wanna add to a current year. That's my thoughts.
Um, Mr. Cassidy or Dr. Burnham, did you wanna throw your hat in this ring?
Uh, I'll I'll kind of jump in, and I really do appreciate um this conversation about expectations and yeah, because it it helps administration um really focus in on uh the needs of the school committee, so thank you for having this conversation. I know that the process that we go through administratively, and there's a lot of conversations and it's it's passionate and every principal is um advocating for their needs. And and I think over the last couple of years, I think it's it's been reflected in in those detailed plans um of 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 what we feel the needs are are for the students. On the other hand, it it, you know, there there is, uh, I think someone said fire, with smoke coming out of the areas. Like, that that it it's a time on a tradition, once we pass that uh that document up to Town Hall. And uh I I just I I just don't want to go in, um, I mean, I can tell you, I'm just taking a stab at this, knowing at two and a half percent, maybe over the next two and a half, uh, next five years, that might be three new positions in the district if we're if we're level funded two and a half percent. I I'll just, that's three new teachers, I so that's 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 the plan. Um, but, you know, Peter, I think you were part of the the Finance Committee when this was the the first year of this. And I I I love this exercise that we do administratively. I I think it's a, it's a great tool uh for administration to to reevaluate this every single year, publicly state what we need. And by say stating it publicly, um, you know, it it's um if grant money does become available, there is a plan on the shelf. You know? Um, and it, just because it it doesn't get into the the uh the document that gets up to Town Hall, I just, I just wanna make sure that the administration isn't um um, not penalized, but just um kind of go back to the old drawing board. I think that that plan is crucial, and and whether it's funded or not funded, it's a, it's a, it's a good exercise, it really drives the the budget. And um I don't know, that that's my, that's my concern, it, you know, if if and and let's face it, I don't think actually more local funds are gonna be coming, you know, it's a three, three and a half percent, four percent. But if, if if Desi is is the issuing out um competitive grants for uh uh for for needs-based projects, we we having that plan on the shelf is gonna really drive what we're gonna be submitting. So I I guess, you know, I think there's, there's almost a compromise in in here, but I I, once again, I I I think going through that exercise and explaining what we need um is is absolutely crucial to the public, so they can hear it, the school committee knows um that um we've got a plan. And um, and and it also gives a a place for uh administration to to kind of uh uh let everyone know what's going on in the schools. So I I know, I kind of uh was trying to incorporate a lot of things there, I hope I was clear in my thoughts. But um
I I, your points are well taken, Mr. Cassidy, and I, you know, you brought up the history of this, and I think it is important to point out that we are at a moment of in time that is different than where we were three or four years ago, when the five-year staffing plan started feeding the fiscal forecast, right? So before that, the town manager, there really wasn't any coordination, I don't think, between the town manager and the superintendent's office in terms of what that fiscal forecast looked like. It was a request from the Finance Committee saying, we get some color from the school department, and it turned into that hockey stick that I that I described earlier, and I'm I'm sure she won't mind me my using her name, but, you know, if you recall, Phyllis Luck was a select person at the time, and she was the person with smoke coming out of her ears over this, right? Um, and and, you know, part of it was it it was a misalignment of of interpretation or understanding or communication, right? It was, you know, the more, the reality was more along the lines of what you just described, Mr. Cassidy, rather than a five-year budget exercise, which it it really wasn't, it was a tool for a budget exercise, but it was interpreted differently, but nevertheless, those numbers still come around every year and they go up on a screen and it one of these things is not like the other, right, and others, and and that's kind of what what happens. Your point around what we've been able to do with that staffing plan, given a scenario like COVID and given a scenario where there's substantially more grant money than there was previously, and being able to put that plan into action is a very good illustration that we didn't have three years ago. Right? We weren't able to tell that story three years ago, so that's, that's a very important element. Um, you know, but back to my point, I I think we need to be able to show both sides of the coin, because by only showing one side means it gets interpreted as this is what the school committee wants, this is where they're going, and they're completely misaligned with reality. And I I I'm very concerned about that being the takeaway and none of the other good stuff being part of the takeaway, right? It's it's the the preponderance of the message that one takes away.
Dr. Burnham, did you want to add in anything?
So the staffing plan, the identified needs, um, in part, like Mr. Cassidy was saying, is in an attempt to identify what we believe we need for staffing levels in order to meet the needs that we see before us for the for the students. We're trying to be transparent. Um, that way, if and when other funding sources become available, it's not a surprise to anybody if we say that we're going to hire an extra nurse. It, if it's in the plan, then everybody, it should be, you know, comfortable with the fact that this didn't come out of nowhere. Um, so that's one thing. The other thing is that Mr. Cassidy and I have a meeting with the town manager every year when this plan is developed. We are clear with each other that we understand that we're not going to get an expanded budget in order to get all of the positions that are listed. Um, I I don't, I don't know what the better way to approach it is exactly. Um, you know, it, the thought had occurred to me, um, what Mrs. Arshambo had mentioned earlier. Do we just put in one position every year of the five-year plan, and it's a ambiguous one FTE? And we'll figure out what that position is. Um, I think the tension lies sometimes between, yes, we we understand that we are one department in in the town, um, and I've always said this from the very beginning. I am not looking to get additional funding for the school department at the expense of other departments not getting what they need because I need them to have what they need so that they can support us in the various ways that they all support the schools, whether that be the library, the senior center, the public safety departments, the DPW. We we work with all of them. That said, I wouldn't be doing my job telling you what you need for a strong school system with high-performing students and all of their mental health needs met and all of our staff well-paid. If I just annually accept that we're a two and a half, and if that means no new positions, that's what that means, no new positions. We will always accept a two and a half. It it's that tension between, yes, we realize that that's a reality and it's a limiting factor, but at the same time, sometimes we, the school committee, in that context, have to advocate when we know that there's a need that we must meet. And it's going to require above two and a half percent. So it's um I I don't disagree with your your assessment of the perception. No matter how many times I've been before boards going over the plan and explaining in plain English, we know we cannot have all of these positions in the budget. We don't expect that we will. This is to identify the needs of the school department. And then we prioritize based on you know, the two and a half percent or maybe a three percent, and and honestly, there have been times where uh, there was one year that Monty Tech came in under what uh, the town manager had sort of projected for their percentage. And because we had that plan in in our in our possession, here's the plan. We had the conversation and she increased uh, the percentage slightly beyond the two and a half percent. It, like I said, it's a challenge, right? We're supposed to be here advocating for what the schools need to be a really strong school system and meet the needs of the kids. But at the same time, we're all part of the one community, and there's only so much money to go around. You know, so i- it's that tension of just sitting back and saying, yes, we'll accept the two and a half percent. And and not not to the other extreme of, no, we need enough money to hire these ten positions, we know we're not anywhere near that. But it, as Mr. Cassidy said, the exercise that we go through, although he he likes to frame it as it's a great exercise for us to do, and it is. But I will say that every year when we do it, I walk away from every single meeting feeling very heavy because there are really hard decisions to make, and we're not going to achieve our vision of a high-functioning school for the middle school, for the high school, for Turkey Hill, primary school. I can tell you that, uh, but right now, I've had conversations with Mr. Santry about a vision, a staffing vision that would help him meet the needs of the more struggling students and give them a pathway to success in high school. And I feel very heavy after have the conversations with them, because I know I am not going to, we are not going to be able to deliver on it, because there are so many other more pressing priorities. It, Mr. Cassidy, it's an excellent exercise for me. Every meeting I walk out of with a broken heart, because I I know we're not gonna be able to deliver what what all of the leaders in the district are saying they need to have for their schools.
So I I don't want to belabor this, and I I don't know that we'll resolve it tonight or come up with a plan, but I I appreciate you hearing me on this. Just one other thought on this is that, you know, I I want you to be thinking about a better place and how you can drive our school district forward, right? Like, I want you to be thinking about that, I think that that's the right thing to be doing. On the other hand, you know, three of us spent, four of us spent a good, good portion of all of our evening last night um in a, in a very long town meeting. And and I can tell you that there isn't a lot of, there there there's, there aren't a lot of people who are thinking that, oh, something bad might be coming from a budgetary perspective in the next few years, right? Like, the expectation is generally, you know, because we all have short memories, like the next three years from a budgetary perspective will be like the last three years, and and the reality is, is that they probably won't be. Right? Um, there's a fifty percent chance that they're gonna be a lot worse than they were. And I I feel as if it's, you know, my duty as a school committee member to get us thinking about that potential as well. Right? Because what can we be doing today to prepare for that possibility? Um, what should we be doing to illustrate what the ramifications of that are to the town and to our legislators and to whoever else will listen? Um, so that when the time comes, when we have to make cuts or we have to fight for budget, that it's not the first time that people have heard about it. Right? It's back to my who moved my cheese scenario, right? I don't want to be the one to tell somebody that their program is cut two months before where the program is gone. Right? It needs to be, people need to understand that things might not be as rosy going forward as they, from a budgetary perspective, I mean, I don't think everything's rosy, but from a budgetary perspective, as they have been over the last few years. And and I I just, you know, in my mind, there's an opportunity here as well. Right? And the opportunity is that we get to present to the town, in addition to the annual budget process, we get to present to the town through the fiscal forecast process, an opportunity to paint a pic, to paint a picture. And and this is our opportunity. Yes, we should paint a picture that's based on need and that is our hip pocket plan. If we have the money to pay for that, but I think that there's another picture that we need to begin to paint. And it's a, it's a, it's a picture that we hope will never live in. Right? Um, but it I I think it's incumbent upon us, because if we don't do it, nobody else is. And we'll, we'll be in the situation, whoever's sitting in our seats in a year or two from now, will be in the situation of sitting in front of a room full of parents yelling at us because their kids' programs are being cut. And we haven't been proactive enough to at least begin to get people thinking about that in advance and thinking creatively about what we have to have and what we can potentially live with that.
Well, I'm, I just have something I'll to wrap up, I think, uh, because I don't think we're solving anything this evening, as Mr. Beardmore said. I'm seeing two different things here. And and I could be wrong, I often am. Um, but what I'm seeing, the need to do the forecast, and I passionately feel that you need to put all That you need to put all those needs down. We speak for the kids. And if the kids need it, it needs to be presented to the town. We know, and somehow I think we need to delineate on that forecast. That we have no expectation of getting them. I know that Dr. Burnham has said it. I have heard her say it at least. I don't know, probably ten times in, in the last three years. That, that we know that. I have said it at least ten times in the last three years that we know that. They're not hearing that. So it needs to be written down somewhere. We, we understand this. We understand that our piece of the pie has been the two and a half percent. But these kids need these things. And if we can't get them through the budget, we're going to be looking elsewhere. But this is what we need and we owe it to the children and the parents and the families in town. To make sure everybody knows what is needed. When we first started doing this, the idea of a director of teaching and learning was like, oh, I hope we can do it sometime. I hope we can do it sometime. That is what's going to drive the achievement change that we are all. Predicting and we are all banking on without that position in that forecast. When you. Piece together budget and grant money and I remember that first year it was all pieced together. But somehow money was there. That's the seed of the achievement and that had to be done. So I, I very strongly believe that the whole thing needs to be presented. But I also agree that we have to come up with some way of saying. W- we're not shutting down the DPW to do this. We, we are not taking anybody else's money. We know what our share is. And, and we're working with that. But this is what we need. I, I really think it is incumbent upon us as representing the children in the community. That that comes out. So, um. If no one else has any, yep.
So I, I have, I have one. One question to put out there as we are. Uh, currently underway, working on the next iteration of a five-year plan. We've had. Public comment over the last several months around SEL, around achievement. Those are the positions. The added positions that have been funded through ESER. And I'm, I'm just wondering if you have thoughts around what your priorities would be. Does the achievement take priority? Does supporting our students' mental health and wellbeing take a priority? Or are they sort of? Equal in priority? Are there other priorities? That you have? If you could give us some guidance, if, if you have any thoughts. Strong thoughts, one way or the other, what we should be looking to prioritize. That will help. Because we are going to have to make decisions about what happens to the positions that are currently. As are funded. If in fact. We can demonstrate that there's a need for them and I feel very confident that we will be able to demonstrate a need for all of them.
Mr. Schoenbrini.
Dr. Burnham and the other people that have experience with education. If this makes me sound like I'm a horrible Vulcan or something, just tell me, but. If you took empirical data and figured out what sort of things help. Show the strongest correlation between increasing system-wide academic achievement and you just rank them. Why wouldn't that be a good way to do it?
It, it could be. But again.
I like, I legitimately have no idea. Like I, I don't, I don't even know, I, you know, like. When I, when I did my dive on SEL, I was really sort of stunned at how much, uh, empirical. You know, peer-reviewed empirically validated studies were, I mean, study samples were incredibly large sample sizes. So like, what if you just did that? Would that, would that be a way to do it? I mean, it seems like that would be the easiest way to justify it in terms of a budget. But I also think that that sounds, you know, like one thing that, uh. Carol told me once is that they're kids, not widgets. And I'm, I'm concerned that if you did. That, that you would just result, it would result in like a widgetization of children.
So there, there are a couple of things happening, right? Simultaneously, if you look at Maslow's hierarchy of need. The kids need to feel safe and cared for and have their basic needs met. Before they can get to that higher thinking, the learning, right?
Yep.
The, so if you look at through that lens, if you don't meet those needs for kids. Then you're, you're creating situation that potentially is impeding. Their ability to learn optimally. Therefore impacting potential achievement. But for some kids that have an identified gap. They, they may be in a good place and may not have the same social emotional needs that other children need met. But they need more targeted instruction. From, from a teacher or a tutor. In order to close their gap. The other prong of this whole thing. Is having. Curriculum leadership structure in place. Having a solid, strong curriculum. In place. Evidence-based, that's what we've just adopted math and, and ELA for K five. We're looking at. The current curriculum to make sure that it is standards-aligned, six, twelve. Um, we are gonna look at some potential. Um, materials to pilot at six, eight. But having a solid, strong core curriculum. And that means that all teachers are teaching from the core curriculum so that kids have a common experience. Across all teachers. You will never take the individuality away from an individual teacher and how they deliver the curriculum and how they engage in. In the learning with, with kids. That will always be a part of it. But every grade level, every content area, there should be non-negotiables in the core curriculum. Meaning all teachers do these things in this unit. Having that is one layer. We, we just purchased that. But equally important for the long game. For the long game. Is having coaches for teachers. So that they can strengthen their tier-one whole class. Instruction so that they're providing quality instruction so more kiddos are learning on grade level without the added. Intervention support. These things haven't been in place. They are now falling into place. The first year of delivering this brand-new curriculum is not a magic bullet. The teachers. Are struggling to deliver this new curriculum because it's teaching math in a way that is different. They haven't taught it this way before. They have to learn how to teach it. So I don't expect. Gangbuster results at the end of this year because the teachers, all of them. Are like first-year teachers this year. They are every day teaching something new that they hadn't taught before. It's a new curriculum for them. There are multiple things converging here that line up to give you. Stronger academic performance for kids. It's a difficult thing to pull it out and say, well, which piece of the Jenga puzzle can I pull out and not have it all fall out? Right? But I, I'm telling you. We have to meet the basic needs of kids, their social, emotional, their, their needs that we have to. You, you can forget accelerating achievement. If, if we don't do that. And again, it's not going to happen overnight. But if we can keep the coach positions, our instructional specialist positions. And we can strengthen classroom instruction for our teachers. We will have more children being successful just with the classroom instruction. Instruction around a quality, evidence-based, research-based curriculum. It, I don't know. I mean, I still need to wrestle with all of this with my leadership team. But my instincts tell me after decades doing this work. We have to meet their basic needs as best we can. We have to be able to provide some level of targeted instruction for the kids who really need it. We have to strengthen. Tier-one instruction for all kids, all teachers, all classrooms. I think those coach positions are critical. I think some level of intervention staff is also going to be critical for a period of time. And I think we have to maintain. More social workers in the district than what we had pre-COVID. Pre-COVID, we had one. There is, I'm telling you right now, based on the caseloads of our social workers. There is no way we will meet the needs of the children of Lunenburg. And the families of these children. Going back to one social worker serving the district. We have a lot of very hard decisions ahead. Which is why I was just wanted to give you an opportunity if you feel strongly. One way or another, what should be prioritized? Otherwise, you're gonna, you know. Leave that heavy heart feeling wrestle with all of this, just with me, that's, that's fine too. I'll do the best I can.
So, um.
Miss, Mr. Layton.
Thanks, um. Yeah, so bad news is I think I'm gonna give it to you, but. Um, I think the idea is it's, it's the leadership team, right? Like you guys are the experts in there and it's the teachers and. The leadership team having those interactions with, with the teachers. And the staff so that they get a sense of where everybody's at, where programs are at. I think it's. I look at it, it's like, what's the biggest thing that we can do? What's the biggest area that we can help this year? And maybe it's different every year, like a COVID year, you need more social workers. But I also look at it, it's like a blended look, like you're not going to put all your focus on one area. So it's a blended of whether it's social, emotional curriculum, the coaches. But yeah, I think it's. Things will fall into place and you see what areas need the most help, but I think. We're looking at like what's been in place and they're growing, they're doing great, that area is fine. Okay, maybe this area, they need more growth now. Okay, let's look at this and give these guys more support so they have that growth. So I think it's kind of a year-by-year and situational basis. I think honestly it is the, the admin team, the leadership team that's gonna be able to make those decisions a little better and then present it to the school committee.
Mr. Beardmore.
So. Okay, I generally agree with Mr. Layton, but you know, you asked a direct question. Uh, around priorities and you know, my takeaway before you even went into your, you know, very impassioned. Discussion about it is it's like asking me if I can live without my fingers or my toes, right? Like it's. Okay, well, I really need to type for work, so I guess I'm living without my toes, right? Like that's kind of how I, how I think about it. So. Um. So there's no good answer, right? And that's kind of the problem of the exercise. I've been in a lot of. You know, business workshops where you're doing a massive plan for next year or something and then a facilitator comes in and says, okay. Well, now take your plan and I'm taking away your marketing budget. So go tell me how you're gonna sell more stuff in the marketing budget or that kind of thing, right? And you, you kind of war game, you get creative, you see what you can do with duct tape and bubble gum that you weren't, that you were planning to do with. You know, high-quality industrial stitching before and, and it, it's a sucky exercise, but. It, it's, it's, it's a necessity when you're planning for bad scenarios, right? And, and it's not pleasant by any stretch of the imagination. To answer your question directly. My answer is achievement. Right? Because a- as I think about it, we have a population, you have all your kids, it's a hundred percent. And, you know, how do we? How do we help the most kids for the most amount of time? And I think that, you know, where. We may be, and I think we're. Absolutely doing the right thing by spending on social working and doing the case management and all that stuff that we're, we're doing right now and God willing, we continue to do. It or a portion of it for the. In perpetuity, really, um. Classroom instruction is for all kids. And it drives all kids forward. You know, some of the things that you didn't bring up earlier are. The high achieving kids, right? Like, are, are we, are we going to be able to continue or, or, or even. Uh, improve our, our challenging of these kids since we've been, you know, in my opinion, a bit distracted on, on the lower end, which is. You know, what I think Mrs. Plant was commenting a little bit about earlier today. I honestly, I see the same, the same issue. Sports, music, extracurriculars, like, I mean, that's all part of the program that in my mind, like. There's, you know, my kid isn't, and I can say, just to illustrate. My, my kid isn't getting any special services right now, but if you take away football and track. He's probably gonna need special services because he's gonna drive you and all your teachers crazy. Um, so, you know, I mean, that, I, I, I think we need to be thinking about how we can maximize. Our resources to drive the most kids as forward and advance them as much as possible. Um, I think we need to look at the, the totality of our, of our population. Um, and, and does that mean that some kids are going to be? Under-resourced in some areas? I think the. Unfortunate reality is, is that they might be and that's something that, again. We need to illustrate that scenario so that people understand. If that eventuality were to come to pass, what we would potentially be dealing with.
Well, I'll throw my hat in the ring here. I, I do want to say that. Whenever I hear improving tier-one instruction. That means kids that are above grade level. They are in that tier-one group. You, when, when you're a classroom teacher and you have your twenty-three kids in front of you. They are at all different levels. Tier-one means you meet each of them where they are. The teachers in Lunenburg have not been taught how to do this with the data dive. It's something many schools have been doing for a while. This is why those coaches are vital. Because without those coaches. Your tier-one, which is everybody. All those individual needs, you don't know how to juggle it until you learn how to juggle it. It is a juggling act. And it is something I always say teaching is more of an art than a science. That's the juggle. You take the data, that's the science. And then how you juggle it and how you work this child with the personalities and with their need to achieve further. Or that child with their personalities and their need to be bolstered, that's the art. So, um. Definitely, you need to keep those coaches, that, that to me. But the coaches can't coach anybody if the kids aren't present. If the kids, if, if the kids are not present to learn. You can't, now I know, I understand what Pete is saying, that's not everybody. I agree. But a child whose needs are not being met. Can certainly disrupt a whole bunch of kids who are trying to get their needs met. So even though it may not be all of them, it affects all of them. So, so my take, those coaches. And the social workers. I, I think, I think if, if I had to make those decisions, that's, that's where my decision would be. I want to keep everything. But I, I know that's, that's not, that's not in the cards as we're moving forward, so. I think what we need to do is we need to think about. And revisit next, at the next meeting, how to organize. The five-year forecast so that. It is understood what we're trying to say with it. That it is understood that we know the money is not endless and it is understood that we know hard decisions are going to be made. So, you know, I, I think, um. The next, at our next meeting, we should probably revisit that and see. How we can structure it. But I, I. I think it's vital that people know what the needs are. So did we beat that one completely to death, I think perhaps? Okay, alright, so, um. So let's go on. Uh, uh, next item is class of two thousand twenty-two funds request.
So, um. Ms. Pam Valley is, uh, one of the advisors for this class. She was not able to attend this evening. Uh, but you have a letter from her, uh, requesting, as is typical. Um, every year, the, the graduating class comes back and they. Uh, request release of the funds from their class account. Um, to be put in an account under the names of. Uh, a member or two, two members of the class so that they can ha- have access to these funds for future. Uh, class activities like a reunion as an example. Um, so, um, you do have a, a request to release. One thousand three hundred fifty-three dollars and sixty-five cents, which is the remaining balance. Uh, in the account for the class of twenty twenty-two. Um, they have opened an account in the name of the class president and the class treasurer. Um, and they are requesting the release of these funds for that, uh, to be de- deposited to that account.
I move that he, uh, release the funds as requested.
And before we vote on that, I just wanna thank the class in two thousand twenty-two for the generosity. And donating money for the scoreboard and for the, um, very many things that they did. During COVID to, to try and, and gather some school spirit. So I thank them very much for that and wish them all well in their endeavors. So, um, could we have a little call vote? Yes?
Mr. School and Brini?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
Beardmore?
Yes.
And Mrs. Arshambo?
Yes. Okay, next on the docket is a donation.
We have a donation, um, in the amount of one thousand two hundred dollars. Uh, to the Lunenburg High School Athletic Department. Um, this donation is coming from the, uh, Sosik, um, Foundation. And they, uh. Have, uh, requested that this be used, uh. By the department at the discretion of the, um, athletic director to benefit the kids in the athletic department.
So we need to have a motion to accept this generous donation.
So moved.
And a second?
Second that motion.
And once again, thank the Slosik Foundation for all the wonderful things they do for our community. A little call vote?
Mr. School and Brini?
Yes.
Mr. Beardmore?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
Arshambo?
Yes. Well, those are quick. Uh, the next topic may not be as quick. Um, what we're doing is we're looking and discussing once again the town building use concepts. Um, I tried to capture what I thought. Um, we were trying to say at our last meeting, I put a draft letter and I'm very sorry I didn't get it in till this afternoon. I put a draft letter in. But, um. I'd like to just make sure, A, that everything I said was factual. And, um, I didn't get anything misremembered and, um. And after we've had time and space to think about this, is this where we all are? Um, we had not picked one of the options. I think we had made a point not to pick one of the options. Um, instead, what we did is talked about. What? What needs we had or the community has that were not met. In these options, so I tried to put that in there. Um, but also tried to convey that. We very much hope. That this municipal building committee is successful in their journey. And that we do have some kind of plan for these buildings and, um, un-. Unfortunately, that was not conveyed. Um, I think the words used at that meeting was something like we were going to had pushback. On all of the options. I, I didn't feel that we were hard pushing back on anything. So, um, I tried to convey that in the spirit of the letter. So basically, what it came down to was, um. I talked about that in each of the scenarios, our central office needs and the ACE program have been taken care of. In one way or another. And that we have concerns, excuse me, about the early learning center and the schooling services. And explained once again what those were. Because those don't show up in any plan. Um, the extended day program would still function, but would go back in the primary and elementary schools. Utilizing the cafeterias and gymnasiums in each building. Uh, not terrific, but certainly is doable. And however, by doing this, we are ousting some of the community youth. Um, athletic activities that happen in our gymnasiums in the afternoons because we will have to have our kids in them. And, um, I spoke a little bit about the fact that these programs that are in jeopardy. Are run by the school department, but they're community-based, community-needs programs, they're not educational programs. Um, they are childcare programs. And then I went through, would it be possible to renovate? The Brooks House for the Early Learning Centers, that's something possible. Um, I pu- also put in the idea of a metal gymnasium. Um, when the north wing comes down, would there be space for a metal, a metal structure? To serve as an additional community gym close to the Eagle House could be used during the day for senior programs. And provide extra space for programs bounced out of the schools by extended day. Um, I, I said we didn't pick an option because the concerns were above. I put also that we were not addressing the needs of Turkey Hill right here, as this is not the venue for it. And, um, then I just hope they would have success. So is this where we are? Did I capture that correctly?
I think you did a really good job. Really good.
Uh, Brian? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. I didn't realize you were keeping going.
So, um, just a couple of thoughts on here, um. I, I think, so one of the thoughts that I did not articulate, because I hadn't thought of it, uh, when I was talking about the, the gymnasium. Is there's the north side of, of, uh, TC Passios, but potentially there's also the, um. The west side of TC Passios, which right now is a grass field between, um.
Right.
The building and the, uh, uh, playground. Um, and potentially that could be an option as well, that maybe more conducive to. A phased approach and getting that addressed before the availability of that space goes away. Um, so in any event, that was a thought. Um, relative to the. To our support for any scenario. Um. In my mind. We've got to. M- my support right now is contingent upon these issues being addressed. Uh, and I'm just speaking as an individual, I don't know if I, you know, I don't know if anybody else agrees with me, but. But my support is contingent upon finding a solution for these other issues. Um, and, and that includes, and I know that it's out of scope for the municipal building committee. But it includes a commitment to deal with Turkey Hill. Um, and so maybe that turns into a different communication with the select board and the town manager and capital planning. I'm, I'm not quite sure, I haven't. Figured that out in my head, but, you know, I, I, I think it's worth saying in this letter, like, we understand. That forty-two million dollars is not gonna get us to a panacea. Um, but that our thinking is that we could look at. Excludable debt capacity to address most of what's on these scenarios. Uh, in terms of renovations and, and whatnot. But that we are going to need a solid capital plan. Rethink and commitment behind that to preserve Turkey Hill for the next fifteen years. Um, and that means that we have to do work to figure out what that means. I mean, it. We, we can't tell them exactly what that means today because we have work to do to figure that out, but in my mind. They're, they're all related.
Anybody else? Brian?
Uh, thanks for your work on the setting, this is great. I did have a few. Possible revisions. Um, I guess at the start, I didn't know if we wanted to initially just thank them, like thank Mr. Jeffries for coming and attending our meeting too. Uh, just to start off with, oh, something nice. Um. The, the youth displaced, uh, part, which was. Uh, the second to last paragraph where, where it says by taking gymnasiums for extended day, the community youth program, uh, programs that use our gyms would be displaced. I didn't know if it was gonna be displaced as much as maybe. Uh, limited time, losing gym time. I didn't wanna say they'd be totally displaced because maybe after extended day is over, that they would still be able to use that space. But it's gonna be much less time than they usually do.
So what I put was. Um, the community youth athletic programs that use our gyms would be displaced. They would need to find another space or be rescheduled.
Yeah, and I wonder if it's more, not so much rescheduled, but maybe it's, uh. Scheduled in a shorter time window or reduce their scheduled time window.
Okay.
I think maybe the word, a better word might be impacted.
Oh, yes, I would agree.
And not getting, not speculating on what that impact is because. We know that it's there, but we don't know specifically what those impacts are.
I like impacted better. Um. So. Do you want me to? If I say athletic programs that use our gym would be impacted. And do I stop there or do I say that their time, you know, they may have to schedule less time?
I think just impacted due to.
And then be done.
Extended day, taking gym space for.
Yeah, that's what I've got.
Yeah, or, or we'd like to seek alternatives. You know, they're gonna be impacted and we, we see a need to explore alternatives.
And I think that's where you throw in the, uh, potential additional gymnasium.
Okay. Alright, got it.
And I think. Um, I'm, I'm on a similar page to Peter here too. I think we do wanna mention Turkey Hill, so it's, it's documented. Um. I had just. I had mentioned the words renovation commitment. I like the idea of Peter saying a solid capital plan and commitment. Or renovation commitment to Turkey Hill, to funding Turkey Hill through the capital plan.
So what I wrote was we, um, the needs of the Turkey Hill Elementary School are not addressed here. As this is not the place for it, suffice it to say, we, suffice to say, we're watching the debt capacity and surmise in a new. Or renovated building will not be realized in a ten-year span. So after that, do you want me to?
Maybe even, how about this, like the last sentence, this need will be addressed with, how about? This need will need to be addressed with the appropriate town officials?
This issue will need to be addressed?
Need, this need will.
This, I just don't wanna.
This will need to be addressed with appropriate town officials. So move the need to after will, this. This will need to be addressed.
Okay.
And then add the word to, this, this will need to be addressed with the appropriate town.
With the appropriate, okay.
Carol, my comment would be. Um, I guess from an outsider, when you, when we mention athletic programs. Um, for me, the connotation just designates school athletic programs. And not town athletic program, soccer in school. So I, I think at some point that just needs to be clarified, so. People internally and, and outside of the school district understand that it infects all programs utilizing the, uh, the gyms.
So I put community youth athletic programs, what, how would I?
No, that, that, that's fine, when previously it just mentioned, it was just mentioned athletic programs.
Okay.
Community athletic.
So I'll make sure when I write athletic programs again, that I put community with it each term.
Yeah, 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 the community needs to be clear that this does impact them as well.
Do we currently have any, do we currently have any adult programs that are renting that space? There was volleyball or something going on?
Volleyball and basketball.
Yeah, so it's.
Volleyball.
But it's not just.
Right. Yeah.
Okay, so that needs to be changed too then, so I'll put youth and adult. Programs.
It's as long as the, the community is aware that this is gonna impact their programs and not just the. The Lunenburg Public School Athletic Programs.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I think in that third to last paragraph in the last sentence where it says. It then would provide some additional space for programs bounced out of schools by extended day. I think we throw all that stuff in there, so it's gonna be the. I think you list them instead of just saying the programs, I think we list.
Okay.
Adult programs, the community youth sports. The senior citizens, yeah.
So. Okay.
So. With respect to Turkey Hill in that last paragraph, uh.
Yep.
I, I know I said it and I, I'm not sure that we're all there, um. I, I know we intend for this document to be, um, positive. And, and complimentary, um, but I, I in no way, shape or form want to convey that. If. If these issues aren't addressed and there isn't a commitment. To deal with Turkey Hill. That the school committee, you know, is, is, you know. Pull, pulls away our support at the last minute, having, having indicated that we, you know, generally do support the effort, right? Like, I think that, I think we need to be balanced in our approach here. We think that this is, is good progress, but. These other issues need to be addressed, right? Because I, I'm, none of these have been. Heavily debated topics by the municipal building committee, to my knowledge. Right? And. I I think that. I don't expect them to deal with all of them, in particular Turkey Hill. That's a different venue. But I also don't want. To lead anybody to believe that. In our minds, or in my mind, anyway, Turkey Hill is not very much related to this and is going to require a commitment. For me to support the all of the other stuff.
Any thoughts on that?
I'm just trying to reword the sentence, that last sentence in the second last paragraph, but Peter, feel free to jump in. But maybe it's the needs of Turkey Hill. And. The the children of Lunenburg Public Schools. Needs and the school committee needs a commitment. To address the needs and to preserve Turkey Hill, something along those lines.
Yeah, I mean, it's, yeah, I mean. I almost said, can we work it? Can we work with the word deed in three times in a sentence?
If we try.
I I that's the gist. I mean, I can't, I can't think of the right way to. But I but I I feel like. And I don't want to. I don't think we need to use the word contingent, but I think we need to communicate it somehow, right? Like it it. This is part of the deal for us is is a plan. And a financial commitment to deal with this, or at least in, you know, a stated intent.
My only concern. Without stating the whole intent. Is then what Heather says will be read into it. They're not supporting anything till they get a new school.
But that's absolutely not what we're saying.
I, that's what I mean. We have to make sure to say what we mean.
So you're absolutely right.
Nuendo.
You're absolutely right. So so it may require another paragraph. Right? Which is actually to outline our intent in terms of figuring out what that means. In terms of. Preserving Turkey Hill for fifteen years. And. And. Aligning. Our capital plan request with MSBA. And needing to prioritize that capital. Over the course of the next three or four years, or whatever it is. In light of this initiative. Right? So it it may require a little bit more explanation like. You know, we're we're we're. You know, we're reaching out to MSBA where. There's a, there's a freeze right now in repair program, like, you know what I mean? Like, there's a, there's a lot of additional additional work. That we need to do from a, from a planning and initiative standpoint. To figure out exactly what this would mean in terms of. How we put forth items on the capital plan and 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 seek reimbursements from the state and all that kind of thing. But in my mind. They're looking to bring something forward to town meeting. In May.
Right.
Right? So in my mind, we need to kind of synchronize our efforts. Right? So that. In the February, March timeframe, we can say, and this is what the Turkey Hill package is going to look like. And and. This needs to, the the town manager and the select board need to understand that. And realize that, no, this isn't part of an exclude excludable debt package. But. It's a parallel commitment. And and. We've got, we're we're asking them to do work around some of these particular things around the Brooks House and a gymnasium and whatnot. But we're also saying that we need to do our work. In parallel to be able to define exactly what that means. From a Turkey Hill preservation project perspective.
So. Then. Perhaps. Another paragraph would be something like. The school committee is looking at. Options. For. Something like knowing that. The municipal building project is going to. Pull significant funds. From the town. The school committee is looking at. Options to keep Turkey Hill. Going. Longer or.
Preserve the lifespan, extend the life.
Okay. Of Turkey Hill. By looking at. MSBA funds for not only. Renovations or rebuilds, but also for. Maintenance costs to preserve the building. While. The rest of this goes on. However, you can eloquently say that. Is 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 that what we want? I mean, obviously not as befuddled as came out.
Yeah, I know, I mean, obviously it's time to tease it out, but yeah, I mean, we're talking about replacement of major systems. We're talking about, you know. Doing what needs to be done. To extend the lifespan of that building through the twenty to twenty thirty seven or something, right? Pick a date. And. And we're, we, that's homework we gotta do. And we owe them. A plan for that.
Carol, I think that second to last paragraph can really be the Turkey Hill paragraph. I think you could realistically get rid of the first sentence. We have not picked a preferred option as our concerns have.
Okay.
I think that's like. I think it's just stated in the the letter that we're not picking an option, and then you just jump right into Turkey Hill. It's already kind of the Turkey Hill paragraph.
Yeah, yeah. So get rid of the. We have not picked a preferred option.
And I don't even think you need the second sentence, the needs of Turkey Hill Elementary School are not addressed here. This is not the place for it. I think it. It somewhat is the the place to get it in writing. It's like. It is the place.
Okay.
But we are watching that capacity and.
So. We would start that paragraph by saying. We could do the same. Suffice to say, we are watching the. Debt capacity and surmising a new or renovated. Turkey Hill. Elementary school will not be realized in a ten year span. And then. Put in. We will need to work on the preservation. Of the current building. Therefore. In the capital plan moving forward. You will see items for replacement of major systems. In order to keep this building. Educationally sound. Until funds are available. To renovate, something like that. Is that what we're doing?
Yeah, I mean, I think that you've just articulated more, you know, basically the story. Yeah. And. We are going to report back. With more detail on what that. Requirement will be. And we'll be seeking support. For that plan. In parallel. With support for this municipal building plan.
Carol, I. I I hate to add to this because this is a very complicated process, but.
You think?
Aren't we basically doing what Mr. Jeffries said to do, which was?
Yeah.
So I I don't think it would be, uh, you don't have to do this, but. Telling them that based on consultation with Mr. Jeffries and relying on his professional experience. We're opting to maintain this building. And hoping. In later years to, you know, renovate or replace it. But I think that if we put in the fact that we're basically doing what he told us to do. That it will, it'll make it difficult for them to say. You know, we're holding things up or we're going to withdraw our support. It's like, you came to our meeting, we did what you told us to do. Now we want to be on the record. You know, I I think. Three meetings ago, you said the key point here is not to lose our place in line.
Yes.
I I didn't, you know, that that's obviously right.
Yep, I can put that in. So I think. The process moving forward for the letter, not not for. I can't imagine how to do the rest of the process, but the letter, one step at a time. Would be for me to rewrite this and send it out. And then individually. And then you can get back to me. And tell me what I didn't remember to do correctly. And.
I think we're.
And the other suggestions, Brian is a really good editor.
Well, yeah, I just didn't know if we wanted to have a motion to tonight to try to. Keep the ball moving so that we can get the letter to the.
Yes, I think we need to.
So I would. I would make a motion. That. Pending. A. Rewrite an additional round of comments. That we authorize the chair to sign and deliver the letter. As discussed tonight.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we'll call vote.
Mr. Scolmbree?
Hi.
Mr. Beardmore?
Hi.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
This is our shambro.
Yes. And before we're off the topic, Mr. Pusatieri, thank you for the information on renos and new builds and all that. MSBA. Stuff.
Yeah, you're welcome. I really can't take credit for that. It's something that John Londa had put together. I did reference the MSBA site and all those numbers are in line with John had put together as far as averages. Of new construction and so forth. So obviously the run numbers way above that and way below that, but. But I did spend some time just correlating the numbers and making making sure that they were accurate. So John Londa gets the credit. I just. Give credit for making sure that his, the numbers were right as far as the MSB website is concerned, but. Those are the numbers, so. They are what they are.
That's good to know, though, because as all this unravels.
So.
That question will be asked.
Yeah, there is a tremendous amount of information that I have found on the MSB website as far as total. Reconstruction or building or, you know, separate components. So those numbers probably can be changed at some point, but. The averages of new construction and reconstruction of. Or reconditioning of existing existing buildings are pretty much spot on.
So while I I think that our conversation tonight, Mr. Pusatieri sort of committed you to a project. Around capital planning, you know, I I I guess it's worth asking you the question like. Do you feel that you, you know, that you have what you need to be able to? Number one, understand the realities of. MSBA partnership here. And project. A revised capital. Program specific to Turkey Hill.
We we can put numbers together. Peter, as far as those costs are concerned. You can do a mall a cart versus a complete rental of the entire building. All at once, which. You know, obviously creates a major disruption. But. You know, it it all depends what the committee wants to do as far as that building is concerned.
Well, I mean, the reality here is is that the the path we're going down. I feel like we're going down. Is. The the capital planning. Process. Right? So. If we do it this way, we'll. Hopefully get more than our fair share of capital planning because. There's other stuff that's on the Taipei and Vertex reports and spending that we're doing for maintenance on some of these buildings that will be renovated. As part of the municipal building plan. Perhaps some of that money for capital planning could be freed up for Turkey Hill. Projects, but. It's not going to be a lump sum of. Five to seven million dollars in one year, like, that's just not going to happen. It might be a million dollars per year for five years or something like that, but. We need to be our, be able to articulate a. Feasible program.
Yes, but but it all depends on, you know, which project makes sense to be the first project that we undertake. At the building. Is it roof? Is it glazing? Is it stove front? Is it mechanical? Is it electrical? You know, do you work top down or bottom up on the building? And do you do it all at once, or do you do it in phases?
Well, we can't do it all at once. So I would, I would tell you unconditionally cross that off the list because.
Okay, done.
So.
But you know, the the discussions that we had prior were, you know. Can some of these major upgrades be done during the time off during the summer? Without any disruption to, you know, education.
And that's the information that we need as well as the cost and timing.
Yeah. Understood.
But not next week.
Nah, well.
Tomorrow, you mean, Carol?
Yeah, not tomorrow. Because this is gonna, this is gonna be a road. This is going to be a road. So by the time we're talking this, it's probably going to be after the holidays, I would think, before. Well, after the holidays before we. Need those kinds of details, but we are going to need them. Right? Anything else that we need to say about? This particular topic? I'm guessing not. Okay, then we're going to move on. Thank you, Mr. Pusatieri, for your help.
You're welcome. Thank you all. For your commitment to this project.
Now we go on to the FY twenty three quarterly budget report.
Hi, everyone. Mike Carroll, City Business Manager. So within the the school committee folder is the quarterly report. This is the the format that we've used over the last. Couple of years and I'd like to go through it and kind of analyze. Some of the. How we're doing, and I think we're doing, we're we're pretty much on target on all accounts. We did have some transfers tonight. That will refer to in my presentation. And then we've got some negative balances that I want to bring to to the committee's attention. And an explanation on. Why they're in negative and probably a game plan. So. The the first one is clothing allowance. This one was not highlighted on the original form. This one is in the salary and wages account. A an expense, a clothing expense accidentally. Or inadvertently hit a salary and wage account. So that is, that is why that is negative. We will move that transfer to a supply account. So that by the next quarterly report, that will be resolved. And let me just stop by saying this report will be on our website. And just to kind of summarize it, we go, it's it's spread out. By salary and wages per school. And then. Expenses. By by district and by school. So there's a little introduction to that. The next one, we've got a negative balance at the high school. This is out of our long term sub account. This was an unbudgeted account. For. An open, temporarily open sped position. That is being filled by a para. And just for reporting purposes. I kind of allocated those costs to a new. Line item, just so we can keep those. Funds identifiable for the end of the year report. As soon as that budget kind of levels out, I'll move to make an expanded, I'll move to do a budget transfer to reconcile that account.
Mr. Cassidy, is that a position that we're backfilling?
Yeah, we, right, right now, we're interviewing to fill that position.
Okay.
So. It's a. It's 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 at the high school. It's a small group. Of students. Right now it's manageable, but we'd like to get a full time teacher in there to. To meet the requirement by testing, right, a certified teacher. So now we're going into expenses. And. This is a, uh, this is really a, a, a vague account. Uh, purchase of service, but this is, is really related to um. Uh, nursing ser- services, so. These three line items up here are related to nursing services uh, in, in the budget. This fifty-three, twenty-five is an expense for uh, our nurses to be on SNAP. Which is a, a data entry. Program that we're using in the district. Uh, once again, it was not budgeted. I anticipate trying to allocate that. Uh, expense to uh, a state um, grant. And not a NASSER grant, but this is a, a separate nursing grant uh, that we're trying to, so hopefully. That expense is gonna be gone in the next quarterly report. If not, I'll tell you what. I'll give you an explanation why, and uh, I'll, I'll find money to support that line item. Um. The next one, uh, dues in, in meetings, we did a transfer on that one uh, this evening. Unemployment compensation uh, was under budgeted by five thousand. And I just got the, the bill, uh, the, the monthly bill uh, last week. And uh, it, it. The uh, the people on the bill uh, have dramatically dropped. Um, from that, so the um, that line item should be leveling out fairly soon. As soon as um, I, I, I can see who's gonna be remaining on that list. I'll do a projection and do a, a transfer for that, but that's why that account is in the negative. I'm just kind of waiting for it to completely settle down. We have a small um, deficit two forty-five in water charges. I need to take a look at that. I may. Unencumber some money just to balance that out. Uh, th- there's really just no, I think um. Um, reason why that's over budgeted, so I'll reconcile that. Um, fire safety and furniture, we did a transfer uh, tonight on that. Equipment and maintenance and leases, so thi- this line item, uh, once again, it's a um. A, a line item in flux right now. Uh, we did a uh, a, a new lease agreement. Uh, for our copiers. And so we're, we're, we're kind of in transition of, of um. Uh, finishing all the bills with. Uh, Xerox, our old copy provider and Canon, our new provider. So the, the, this. This account, it, you know, the, the timing is bad on this to be presenting it, but I think uh, we, we'll reconcile this by the next quarterly report. So this is general supply account. We talked about that tonight. That was a, a transfer.
Mike, just a question on the uh, on the copier contract?
Yeah.
Suffice to say, that is a number that was not anticipated and will not likely be. Backfilled through the technology expense section. We're gonna have to find savings kind of across the board to pay for that or.
I, I'm hoping we'll reconcile, we'll bring that number way down. Uh, like um, but I'm hoping we're gonna reconcile it. So we encumbered. Uh, money for Xerox and we've, uh, we've paid an upfront uh, annual lease and then we pay. Uh, 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 like seventeen hundred dollars a month. So, so we've already paid for the year. To, to, trying to make this story not so complicated. So Canon came in, he, they're gonna buy out. Um. The, the remaining lease. Um, we're not gonna have to pay um. We're gonna have to encumber some money for Canon, but we'll be able to unencumber. Uh, some, some of the money that we have set aside for future payments for, for Xerox. So I think that number is gonna come down, way down, once, once we get, uh, once we get Xerox off of our um. Uh, you know, our expensive, our PO system, and we've got Canon ready to go. Um, once again, if, if that is still in a negative, I, I'll be looking elsewhere in the budget. Uh, to, to support any deficit in that account. Uh, what, will it come out of the technology? That, that's the first place I normally look. So um, and this is, this is what we do for, for, for our schools. If the schools want to make a transfer. Um, the, you know, in the primaries, it is, is excellent, by the way. Uh, i- if they, if they want to increase their furniture account. They look, they, they look internally to make transfers. They don't come to the district. Where, where technology is a district account, we look from within what was budgeted within that department. That is strictly um, followed uh, when we budget. For our special services and our special education program. We don't want to uh, be allocating. Um, some of our budgeted amounts for our special ed students to um, non. Special ed um, related programming. That we can't charge toward the uh. Uh. The uh, the, the, the agreement that we have with the state of what we're gonna commit to, to the special ed program. Kind of babbling a bit. But um. But well, you know, we, we kind of look from within and usually um. And I'm trying to make tho- those transfers more clear, which is um, and there may be extra lines. Um, when I do those transfers, but I try to uh, sh- show the committee and the public. That uh, whenever I can, th- those, the district money is staying within the, you know, the, the, the. The transfers are staying within um. Uh, the budgeted areas within the budget, school, uh, whether it's a school budget, technology budget, so on and so forth. So. Um. So tha- that's all I've got to report tonight. Uh, things are, are really on target. Um. So. I did notice the um. I think the printed report had the heading of FY twenty-two. That'll be corrected before it's uh, printed and uh. Uh, presented on our website. It'll be FY twenty-three. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Once again, uh, you know, this is a lot of data. Uh, I, I'd be happy to answer, if you've got other. Uh, if you've got questions in the, in the future around these budget issues, I'd be happy to answer those. Um, dur- during public meeting.
Thank you, Mister Cassidy. Does anyone else have any questions for Mister Cassidy regarding the quarterly report? I'm hearing none. As usual, your explanation is always thorough and. I appreciate that because that, that does show a lot of transparency on your part as to where all this money is going. So thank you.
Okay. This is just a report of progress, but to the, just accepting the um, um, the report as a report of progress. Let's see, that's the only action.
So is there a motion to accept the quarterly report?
Make a motion to accept the quarterly report as presented.
In a second.
Sorry.
And a roll call vote, please. You muted.
Mister Scullenbrini?
Yes.
Mister Beardmore?
Yes.
The Leighton?
Yes.
Mrs. Arshambo?
Yes.
Thanks again, everyone.
Thank you. So now we have committee reports. Does anyone have a committee report this evening? Mister Leighton?
Yeah, the uh, Building Design Committee meeting was canceled. Uh, the Turkey Hill meeting also was canceled. They're rescheduling for December first. Uh, the Athletic Advisory Council met on Monday. Uh, we did approve an indoor track. Fundraiser for raffle baskets and also a ice hockey. Uh, they're gonna be selling ads for their hockey program. Basketball was also approved at a, a prior meeting for calendar, so when just sports are all set. We'll be meeting March sixth um, at seven PM at the middle high school uh, prior to spring sports starting. And I have one more. I sat in on the pack south for Laura uh, January tenth. It was a Zoom meeting with Julian Hanscom and Nicole Camello is gonna be taking over for Matt and Lindsay Brenner. Uh, who no longer can do it. Um, they invite parents to come. Five oh fours, ELL parents or two are invited. Uh, they're trying to do more broad topics, uh, try to do about transitioning from schools. Um, and services that are offered, uh, just to try to inform parents. They were excited that they got some Zoom licenses purchased. Uh, and an add-on is uh, closed captioning, so people can hear different languages and see the different languages across the bottom, so that was a neat. Addition for multi-language is athletics is also gonna be able to use this, uh, and each building is also gonna be able to use it too. Uh, there was also an additional hundred and fifty licenses for Google Read and Write for students. Apparently staff already have it, but there's a hundred and fifty licenses. For students now. They also have a premium mass pack membership, uh, which will include free workshops. They did want to revise their bylaws because they haven't revised them since two thousand and four, so that's gonna be on future agendas. And then they're looking just for additional workshops or presentations, maybe presentations on bullying that they can provide. Uh, maybe reach out to the DA's office to have a presentation from them to just to, again, help out the community and reach out more. And their next meeting is. January. At six PM.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, Mister Beardmore?
The uh, high school advisory committee met, um, school advisory committee met on November third. Um, discussions included parent-teacher conferences and. Um, the possibility of doing a March timeframe, uh, additional parent-teacher conference was discussed. I don't think it's come to any resolution yet, but it was discussed. Um, a review of the twenty-three, the next year school calendar. Um, and potentially looking at half-days during finals week. Um, as an option, rather than full days where. Part of the day is finals and part of the day is still classroom instruction. Um. And budget and MCAS were, were both discussed. Um, the capital planning committee met twice last week. Um, on both Monday and Wednesday. Um, and we have completed our discussions now um, with. Police, fire, facilities and DPW. Um, so our next meeting will be on. Uh, next Monday, the twenty-first, um, where we'll be. Uh, having a discussion about the process, reviewing, uh, getting some updates on some items that we had some questions on. Um, and there's also a um. A uh, charter-driven responsibility for the capital planning committee around a townwide capital inventory that will be. Discussing as well. Um, one item that. I, I do want to bring to the, to the committee and the, the public's attention. It. Since a little bit outside of our domain, but I, I just want to make people aware of it. Um, there is a proposal for an additional parking lot in the area of the Eagle House. Um, and it was um, not clearly defined during our discussion last week. Um, but we received a drawing today and I think it will be discussed in some more detail on the twenty-first. Um, but basically the intent of that parking lot is to go uh, directly between. Where the Eagle House is and the Connor Lawrence um, playground, which is a very narrow alley. Um, and it would include removing some, some of that equipment to the left and repositioning it to the back. Um, so it, it'll make it a little bit, make the playground a little bit narrower and longer, it appears. Um, but would add, add uh, parking spaces. It, it looks like fourteen spaces in the, in the lot. Um, but I, I've asked for some additional clarification. It's not clear if there's lost spaces along the road. Um, as part of that project, so um. The reason why I bring it up is number one, just to make you aware of it. Um, and I'll, once we get to a more comprehensive stacking of the. The request, I'll, I'll bring more detail. Um. But it is a parking lot that is in very close proximity to a playground. Um, and there, it appears that there'll be fencing and barriers, um, which I've also asked for additional detail about, but I just, I want to make. Everybody aware of that. Um, I did take the time to go look. Um, the plan came with a survey plot plan. Um. The school actually, the TC Passio's building was never subdivided. So the, the, the land that the TC Passio's building i- is on is still under the care and cust- custody of the school department. Um, the property line effectively goes, um, if you were to take the line that is. Um. Between Memorial Drive, the border of Memorial Drive and the library. And just kind of continue it into that field, that's sort of where the property line is, and it. It gets just a little corner of the front right. Corner of the, the playground, but ninety-nine point nine percent of that pla- play- playground is in. Select board controlled property. Um, so, because that was my first question is, is who controls the, the land under that space, but it is in fact. Uh, the, the, under the care and custody of the select board. Um, the other thing that I wanted to just make everybody aware of. So there have been um, two big dump trucks, sanding capable dump trucks. Uh, with plows that were on last year's capital plan that are basically backordered and due to be replaced. In this coming uh, September, so September of twenty-three, ten months from now. Uh, and there are an additional two trucks being requested for the FY twenty-four capital plan. The interesting tidbit of information is, is that we have four trucks right now in our DPW that are not functional. Uh, so the two that we've already authorized and the two that are being replaced. Uh, the two that are being asked for now are all to replace non-functioning trucks right now. Um, so our DPW is going to be uh. They're gonna have some management challenges, I think, uh, this, this, this winter season. Uh, and bringing in perhaps some additional contractors and figuring out some other alternatives. Uh, I don't know the extent to what that might affect, for example, sanding on our property, but um, it's something just to be aware of.
Okay, thank you. Um. Anyone else with a committee report? Uh, the finance committee met, but the uh. The video is not available. I have looked and looked and looked. So um, maybe it will pop up in the next week. I don't know if. If you were in attendance, Mister Beardmore, if you had anything you want to say about the finance committee meeting?
I, I actually caught it on, I caught it on Facebook after the fact. I don't think it was posted to YouTube. Um. It was predominantly um. Related to uh, you know, there were a couple of discussions around getting ready for, for town meeting and. Um, some topics around uh, scheduling and expectations for budget season and, and that sort of thing.
Okay.
That, that was my, I didn't take notes, but that was my recollection.
All right, then. Um, if there are no further committee reports, then we have public comment. If there's anyone else that would like to make a public comment this evening? I am seeing none. So I'm going to continue. Um, topics for future discussion. So at our next meeting, we need to revisit the five-year plan. What else are we revisiting? The um, regular calendar doesn't have anything listed for next, for December seventh. So.
Um. Are we gonna, I, I, this is a little out of, out of sync, but um, are we going to be. Ready in December for um, a hybrid meeting in the resource room? Do we know?
I don't believe so.
I don't believe so.
Um, one other thing though, that. Um, one other thing, though, that we could bring up that we haven't looked at is a check-in on our goals and see where we are. Um, I haven't noticed a big push on too many of them, but I have noticed some tweaks. So, um, we could put that where that is a light meeting. We could put that in there.
I don't know if this is something we'd want, but, um, I don't know if we want a presentation about SEL curriculum, um, to inform the public.
I think that's a reasonable thought. I don't know. What do you think, Dr. Burnham?
I'm sure we can find a way to make that happen.
Okay.
Dr. Burnham, since we're all here and, and Brian brought it up, one thing that would be interesting for me as somebody that does not do education full-time is what you were talking about in terms of like just getting kids in the door. Um, you know, like I think that you know, like kids being afraid during Alice Trails is something that is like a really obvious example of why we need the SEL. So maybe something, I, I don't, I don't mean, I mean, I'm sure other people are better at this, but something pretty basic, because like, I don't know any of this. Like, if you have that Yellow Dummies book, you can bust that out for me. I have no idea.
That's probably a really good business opportunity right there, Mr. Schoolenbrini.
I think that's always a good comment, though, because, um, and, and you bring it up regularly, and I appreciate that because we don't always realize that everybody doesn't know the lingo and everybody doesn't know, speaking of our goals, everybody doesn't know, um, to the same level. It, it's always good to bring things down and, and make sure everybody understands the basics of what something is.
So if we're, um, if, if we are to get into a, a presentation or a discussion on SEL, which I think would be a great idea, um, because I feel like there's always more, uh, for me to learn and, and just become aware of in terms of how we're doing this. Um, one of the things I, I'd like to understand, because I've, I've looked at our documentation on it, but to really kind of understand from a, from a kid perspective, right? Like, what is the kid's experience with SEL, right? And, and the amount of time that is involved here, how it's integrated into other lesson plans or not? Um, how much standalone time is in, like that, that kind of thing? I, I'm not, I'm personally not clear on. I've been told some things, but, but I don't have a, a really clear understanding wh- what the kid actually encounters, uh, when it comes to the SEL curriculum. And, and I, I'm sure it, I'm sure it's something that you could go on for hours on. I'm just looking for some, some, maybe semantical examples.
Okay. Then I think that's enough to keep us busy.
Thanks for suggesting that, Brian.
I was gonna make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, yeah, let's do that.
Yeah.
That's a good one. And a second?
Second.
All right, um, uh, Mr. Schoolenbrini, we are five minutes over, two and a half hours. Just thought I'd let you know.
Thanks.
So then all those, um, oops, can't do it that way. Think I would know by now.
Mr. Schoolenbrini?
Yes.
Mr. Beardmore?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Arshambo?
Yes, and everybody have a wonderful Thanksgiving.
Thank you.